Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Toya Tucker, District Four. Charmaine Crabbe, District Five. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim, and District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
And welcome to the June 21st, 2022 council meeting. As you can tell, I am not Skip Henderson. Our mayor is bringing greetings at the Homeland Security Meeting at the Trade Center this morning, so he'll be here shortly. And now we will call on Pastor Sneed if she'll bring our invocation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we thank you for blessing us to see this another day. We thank you for all of your blessings and all your provisions. We thank you for these men and women who you have called to a life of service. And as we come on this 21st day of June, 2022, Lord, we place this meeting in your hands. We place these city officials in your hands. We place the agenda in your hands. Lord, we pray that your will be done as they make the decisions that you guide them to make, that the decisions will be for all, from the least of them to the greatest of them. Lord, we pray for these city officials, that you will keep them, that you will cover them, that you will protect them, and that you will bless them. It is in your Son Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. Amen. Amen.
Pastor Sneed, we appreciate you coming and blessing us this morning, and thank your congregation for sharing you with us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. If you will, join me now as with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now...
Mayor Pro Tim and members of council. I know that we're waiting on a few more counselors, so I thought it may be okay to put Willie King on the spot. This guy sitting here, Willie King, he's a Vietnam vet. And I'm getting chills, as I tell you, because he posts sometimes on Facebook. Would you come to the mic there for a second? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I believe you were a scouter.
Say again?
You did scouting. You were a scouter. You went out and headed up there.
Yeah, somewhere. My official title, Pathfinder.
Okay.
That's what it is.
What did you do? What does that mean?
Uh, well, it's a little bit of everything you want to know the truth about. We went out, did a lot of CA. If that was going to be a comeback job, we would handle that. If you're going to jump in country or out of country, we will already be infiltrated in deposition to handle the drop zone. If that was a CA, it was a hot CA, we handled the aircraft so the commander could handle his troops. We handled any aircraft in there. We did response to all that.
So you were jumping out of plane?
Most repellent. We didn't jump. It was one or two jumps in Vietnam.
Yeah.
But I didn't participate in it. I did be an infantry soldier. I have five out now. I'll tell you how much flying time I have, and I was an infantry guy, as a Pathfinder. But it was quite, you know, 1920 old guy, it was pretty exciting.
Yeah.
But a Pathfinder, I didn't know what it was. Just something I wanted to do, just do something.
Yeah.
I'm excited, and I got ready to think of it.
Yeah, well, sometimes I see his post on Facebook, and he's in uniform, and he's there with that weapon, and he's out there somewhere. I don't know where you...
I was doing a Cambodia invasion.
See, this guy here knows what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't, but when I see it, it, I'm like, wow.
You should be impressed.
I am impressed. And that's why I put you on the spot. He's a neighbor.
Absolutely.
And a good neighbor. He's one of those neighbors that will look out for you. And I appreciate him being my neighbor, but I'm impressed by his military career, his service in Vietnam. And he was here with his pastor, and I thought I'd put you on the spot, just to recognize you and recognize that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
The city manager, thank you for bringing that up and pointing that out. When you said, when he said Pathfinder, my stepfather, C.L. Moffett, who you knew, was a Pathfinder as well.
Yeah.
And so my, the stories he told me, sir, my respect for you has grown immensely. So I know, I have an understanding for what you went through and what you did. So thank you very much for your service.
All right, thank you.
That was very, very good. Very good. So now we'll move into the city attorney.
The taxpayer bill of rights, Mayor Pro Tim.
Right, I was going to call on him to handle that.
Okay, we're on. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you. This will be the third and final taxpayer bill of rights hearing. It's required by OCGA Section 48-5-32.1. And it's required when the value of our tax digest, meaning the value of all the real property in Muskogee County, is projected to increase. And as we've said at the other hearings, this does not mean that homeowners with a frozen homestead assessment will see any tax increase. They will not. But this ad is required by the state legislature every year when the digest is projected to increase. And we'll now let our finance director, Ms. Alexander, make a few comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as the city attorney stated, each year, the Board of Tax Assessors is required to review the assessed value of taxable property in the county. And when there's an increase in the fair market value of any specific property, whether it's due to significant improvements or property sales, the Board of Tax Assessors is required to, by law, to redetermine the value of that property. That redetermination is called a reassessment. And so when the total digest of all taxable property, as the city attorney mentioned, Georgia law requires that we compute a rollback millage rate when the total taxable property with the digest is, will produce the more revenue, I guess I should say, than what was produced last year had there been no reassessments. So the rollback millage rate is what was advertised in the newspaper, and that is the subject of today's discussion. Just to reiterate, the tentatively proposed millage rate for Urban Service District One remains the same as it was for FY '22, as it is in FY '23, which is 17.51 mils. For Urban Service District Number Two, the rate, again, remains the same for FY '23 as it was for FY '22 at 11.53 mils. And in Urban Service District Number Four, the rate remains unchanged at 10.63 mils. And so again, this is the third public hearing that's required by law, just giving the public an opportunity to express their opinions on the increase, which is really not an increase in the tax rate. It's just that the rollback millage rate is lesser than the proposed millage rate, which is unchanged from last year, so.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll ask again, does anybody in the audience want to be heard on the proposed increase in the tax digest or value of all property in the county? Okay, I don't see any hands. Mayor Pro Tim, we will call that a conclusion of the third hearing required by statute for taxpayer bill of rights. And we can either move on to some of our first reading items, or city manager, do you want to comment?
Well, just on the taxpayer bill of rights, I said it at the last meeting, and I will remind those who are here and those watching by television again that we are proud of the fact that we have not had a millage increase on citizens since 2008. We have not had an increase in millage on citizens since 2008. And we, in fact, we have decreased the millage rate for citizens over the last five years. I'd just like to enter that into the record every chance I get. And so we are proud of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim.
And Ms. City Manager, did you want to start one of your updates?
We can, I think we can go ahead and do the one, the first read in the city attorney has, and then we'll go through the updates because you won't vote on that.
Yeah, we've got a few we can cover that are on first reading. Ms. Alexander, stand by again. Item nine on our agenda is the ordinance providing for taxing districts, including the Urban Service Districts, Business Improvement Districts, and the Levy of Taxes for the calendar year 2022. Total millage rate, 34.13 for Urban Service District One. Are there any questions around the table on that, or anybody in the audience?
The only thing I want to point out this year that's a little different than the way we typically operate. This year, the due date for the taxes are a little different than what our normal due date is. This year, instead of the first installment, the 40% being due the first of October, it'll actually be due October 17th and become delinquent on October 18th. The second installment being due still December 1st, and with the total assessment being delinquent December 2nd. So just wanted to point that out. Typically, we have, we still have the two installments. Typically, the first installment is due the first of October, which is the 40%, the 60% is due the first of December. But this year, due to the delays that we experienced early on in the process, particularly with the notice of assessments being delayed about two weeks, the due date has been adjusted as well.
You said 17, 18?
October 17th is the due date for the first installment.
And the second date is December?
December 1st.
1st.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on that item? Okay, we will move on to the ordinance providing for the levy assessment collection of the tax for the Muskogee County School District, set at 23.321 mils, which is the same millage as the previous year. Are there any questions on that item? Okay, if we don't get any questions, we'll vote on that at the next week's meeting. Is that 5:30, Ms. Clerk, next week? All right, 5:30 PM next week. And then item 11 on our agenda, Mayor Pro Tim, is the housekeeping ordinance related to your change in your budget ordinance. It's a transfer over of Homeland Security Emergency Management to be under the mayor's operation and the mayor's supervision. And it's in Section 2 of this ordinance, the official transfer over and reclassification. But there are also some housekeeping measures that we had to do in the ordinance. This is a new department director performing the same function he's been doing, but it will be its own department under the mayor's supervision. Any questions on that? All right. And we'll bring it back next week, also 5:30 PM for a vote.
Okay.
We'll just have to come back to the second reading items for an official vote when we get a quorum here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. With that, what we'll do is go ahead and have the updates from my agenda, if that's okay.
There's a public agenda you may want to do first.
Why don't we come back to, I don't see them here.
Okay.
I saw them come in, but I saw them walk out. So, but I know they're present. So we'll go ahead with my first update from the clerk of council. Clerk of Council on City Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, members of council, city administrators. One of the topics of discussion for the Clerk of Council's Subcommittee has been city boards, commissions, authorities, and committees. And this has led to what you will see being presented before you today. First, I want to begin with talking about the number of boards. There are a total of 43 active boards. This includes currently the charter review and the districting commission with 382 members altogether. I needed to go back, sorry. Eighteen boards were created by the Constitution of Georgia. Twenty-one were created by local legislation, and two were created by resolution. And I won't read out all of those that were created by the Constitution of Georgia as a result of the Constitution of Georgia. But I will just mention a couple of them. The Airport Commission, Board of Health, Board of Water Commissioners, Downtown Development Authority, Development Authority of Columbus, Hospital Authority of Columbus, Region Six Advisory Council, River Valley Regional Commission, the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority. And before I get into the board recommendations, I did just want to mention that I know Counselor Crabbe wanted to do a full review of all of the city boards and commission. But this first phase only consists of an in-depth review of the ones that were created by local legislation. So I did just want to say that first. And secondly, I did confer with all of the department directors that had an affiliation and worked closely with the boards before making these recommendations. And they were all on board and concur with the recommendations that I will be presenting to you on today. We wanted to look at possibly either dissolving, combining, or reducing some of the boards that the city has. And my first recommendation is to dissolve the Columbus Aquatics Commission. This commission was created fairly recently, but I do know that they have been having some difficulty with acquiring a quorum and being able to meet. So as I move on, I will talk a little bit about my reasoning for asking to dissolve this particular board. Reduce the membership.
Yes.
Hang on. Operator error.
Excuse me. It probably is pretty transparent, but would you give us, can you give us today the charge for the Columbus Aquatics, for the Aquatics Commission? And why we are dissolving it? If it's just because they're not, they don't, they can't get a quorum, we can fix that. But would you give us a little more information on why that is?
Sure, thank you, Counselor Thomas. The goals of the Columbus Aquatics Commission is to enhance and improve the services offered at the Columbus Aquatic Center and the Double Churches Pool supervised and operated by the City Department of Parks and Recreation. There are seven members, including the chairperson. Each member shall be appointed by the Columbus Council. And then that's just a summary of their responsibility and duties.
Well, I think the question was, why would they be recommended to dissolve? Is it something fixable, or is it, the purpose is no longer needed?
Right. After speaking with the Department of Directors, Ms. Holly Browder, we talked about dissolving this particular board, and not just for not having a quorum, but the plan was to move that, maybe two members, into the Recreation Advisory Board. And so I was going to get to that just a little bit later. But that, we were not planning on just dissolving it and get rid of any representation for the Aquatics Commission. But we were looking at combining or moving two of the members into the Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay.
Okay, have three that the recommendation is to reduce the membership. One, Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the Recreation Advisory Board, and the Tree Board. The first two, the council, each member of council has an appointment to those two boards. And then we have the Tree Board. And once again, I will get into the details of what that membership would look like. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the recommendation would be to have two senatorial district 15 members, two senatorial district 29 members, three at large, and to amend their terms. Currently, they have two-year terms, and the recommendation is to move it to three-year terms. And once again, each member of council has a member representation on this board. But with this new composition, that would no longer be the case. For the Recreation Advisory Board, the recommendation is three senatorial district 15 members, three senatorial 29 members. We would have two aquatics representatives on this particular board. And then we would continue to have the Muskogee County School District Athletic Director. So once again, the Recreation Advisory Board also has representative from each of the council districts. For the Tree Board, the recommendation is one residential or commercial development representative, one public utility representative, one landscape forestry representative, three at large, the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission Director. And one of the recommendations is to remove the term requirements for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission Director on this board. Because currently, it states that the director and/or a commissioner may serve on this particular board. But we are just asking that the Keep Columbus Beautiful Representative, Director, be the person serving on this board, and that would remove the required term limitations. And as always, I like to end with a quote. Less is more. Progress is made through precise, persistent, and purposeful pushes. And that's a quote by Scott Perry. And now I may respond to any questions that the members of council may have.
There is. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. In reference to reducing the number of individuals, will that be any counselor that can recommend for those senate districts?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the clerk? Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, will this come back to us in the form of an ordinance or resolution or?
I would imagine so. First time I've seen it, I think, yeah, you know, I have some comments, I think, and questions about it as well.
Well, and Mayor, this is the first I've seen it. And I do think there are some questions that need to be answered. Counselor Thomas, and you certainly asked one of them. I've not had a conversation with the Parks and Rec Director or the deputy city manager, and I'd like to have a conversation with them specifically about the aquatics board. So, and certainly I'd like to talk with the clerk of council as well. And so I think, I'd like to bring it back and Madam Clerk for additional discussion after we've had further conversation with the Parks and Rec Director and a few others.
Yes, Mr. City Manager. And as the mayor stated, any changes would have to be created, a draft from the city attorney's office. And so that would have to happen before anything is done.
And I guess, first of all, I commend you for taking the time to go through and looking at all this. It's, I mean, there's a lot of boards. And very honestly, some of your challenges are of our making from not bringing a lot of these recommendations come forward. But, you know, I think that, just kind of for what it's worth, I think as we emerge from some of the pandemic concerns, and there've been a lot of folks that haven't made and have gotten kind of used to not going and doing virtual, and now virtual's going away, I think maybe make some recommendations, but not act on them right away and see if some of the swelling goes down, so to speak. For example, I know Keep Columbus Beautiful, that's a lot of people, but we got a new director. And frankly, the reason for all of those people being on there is so that we could touch all corners of the community in cleanup efforts. And we definitely have need for a community-wide cleanup effort. So I think it's great work. My only recommendation would be that we move slowly with haste and try to gauge whether or not some of this will, some of these folks will start attending a little more regularly. It may be that an auditorium, that the aquatics could be a committee within the Recreation Commission, Advisory Commission, so that you've got a group that is put there specifically to focus on that. I don't know. I'll leave that.
And Mr. Mayor, I would also suggest that these committees and commissions, that a conversation be held with those as well. We may be able to, you know, find out from the Aquatics Commission other suggestions that they have, having worked with all of this. But make sure that we have as much input as we can, as we can get.
Yeah, and I think to help council and even the mayor in coming up with some of these recommendations for these boards, I mean, we've talked about the YP organizations, trying to get them to kind of provide some input, if anybody that might be interested, get some younger folks involved in this. So anyway, good job on it. I think it just needs to be vetted a little more thoroughly.
Sure, sure. Thank you. And I did want to just commend the boards that have been working tirelessly to try to meet due to the pandemic and all the other circumstances that are before us today.
Yep, thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I'm a little bit late to the party, but since we're talking about board...
I'm a little bit late to the party, but since we're talking about boards right now, I wanted to bring something up. When we were talking about the animal control situation, I had requested that animal control and the board over animal control be able to present to council. And we did have a presentation last time from Public Works and the Animal Control. But I was hoping that we could have a presentation. I know that the animal, the commission wants to present to us, and they've requested to present to us, and they were given an application for public agenda. But I think that what they have to discuss is longer than five minutes. And so I would like to maybe have you reach out to them, Mayor, and speak with them, and then maybe be able to present to us. I would like to have that presentation that they want to present to us.
We can, I can, I can reach out and speak to them. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, certainly, I would welcome them to come and, and talk to mayor and members of council. And that's certainly not a public agenda discussion. That would be something on my agenda. And so I don't know why they were told that they could get on public agenda. But it's a board of, appointed by the mayor and council, and, and they would not be limited in time with a discussion before this body. So certainly, the mayor, as you said, will reach out to them. But I, I will make sure that the Deputy City Manager and Director let them know that we can schedule them for a, an appearance here, and it would be on my agenda.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
We'll get it done. Any further questions for the clerk? Madam Clerk, thank you for your, for your work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I think we have a quorum.
We do.
So we can go back and kind of get called up. One of the first things, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 14th. Motion and second to approve. Any edits or any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are, they are approved. Mr. City Attorney, we'll go back to your agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We'll go back to items one through eight on my agenda, having covered the other hearing matters. First item up is the zoning proposed at 11,011 Veterans Parkway. The nursery price stowall is ready for action.
Motion and second to approve item one. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue the vote. And councillors, you can register your votes, please. All right. And we've got Counselor Garrett on, on virtual, right? No? Okay, I thought we did. Oh, Crabbe was on virtual. Okay. Got it. Okay. I was late too, so we're trying to get it worked out. All right, so that's approved.
All right. Item two is the annual operating budget for FY23. It's as amended from last week with reclassification and a couple of other amendments. But it's ready for action.
Motion, second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. Councillors, register your votes, please. All right, that's approved.
All right. Budget is approved. We've got a non-operating budget of various funds that are listed. It's ready for adoption.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. And if you want to vote in favor, press the red, the green button. That's approved.
All right, we'll call items four, five, six, and seven again for a vote. Pension plans for general government, public safety, disability plan, and death benefit plan. Ready for action.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve this item. Any discussion? All right, please queue it. Oh, we did them all. Do, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, Bruce.
And the last item needing a vote is the low-income household offset for residential waste collection. It's ready for adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, now you queue it. Councillors, please enter your votes. And that's approved.
And the only other request, Mayor, would be an executive session to discuss personnel matters, but that's all we had listed.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we'll move to the, we'll move to the public agenda. Mr. Divine Stevens and Natasha Rogers, representing Grown Man Issues, a stage play. If they are here. Welcome, Ms. Rogers. Now, per council rules, you'll have three minutes for an invitation to a community event. And if that's not enough time, you can come back at the end of the, end of the council meeting. We're delighted to have you here, and I'll, there'll be a timer. And I hate being a bad guy, but I will have to cut you off at three minutes.
That, that's fine. We won't need that long. Greetings, everyone, to the mayor, city council, and distinguished guests. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the new urban stage play that's scheduled to tour your area Sunday, June 26, 6:30, at the River Center for Performing Arts, and it's called Grown Man Issues. Now, to provide more information about the play is the show's executive producer, Mr. Divine Stevens. Mr. Stevens is a world-renowned executive, music executive, developing the careers of notable performers such as Alicia Keys, Lady Gaga, Akon, and P. Diddy, who's my personal favorite. Now, while his accomplishments in the music industry are quite impressive, it is his educational, business, and philanthropic endeavors that makes Mr. Stevens a really grown man to know. So ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our executive producer, Divine Stevens.
Morning, morning. I just want to say thank you guys for having us. We are honored to be here, Mayor and all the city councils, to do something special here in this wonderful city. I just want to say thank you for having us this morning, and I look forward to introducing you guys to Grown Man Issues, which is a stage play about a married couple. And the husband actually brings his baggage and his issues into the relationship. So we all experienced that. We all go through that. And we tap into some very, very emotional subject matters concerning that. So I kind of like want to encourage you guys to actually come out, support. And we look forward to doing many things, many great things in this city in terms of the arts and helping the community. So thank you guys so much, and have a blessed day. Don't take too much of your time.
Well, Ms. Stevens, thank you. We are, we're delighted to have you in Columbus, Georgia, and look forward to the, to the performance. Counselor Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, I wanted to say, Mr. Stevens, thank you. We actually currently have Color Purple, the Color Purple at the Springer. And I attended along with Counselor Woodson on last Friday. It was amazing. And for us to continue to have these type of, you know, stage plays, I'm excited. I'm gonna try my best to make it back from Savannah. Because we'll be down there this weekend to attend a play. But if it comes back, I'm definitely there. Because we, we do need to really support the, the arts more. So thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you guys so much. Look forward to doing.
Mr. City Manager?
Ms. Stevens, sir.
I'm sorry.
Let me just thank you also for bringing the play to Columbus, Georgia. I will be in Savannah and won't be back until Tuesday, and so I'll miss it. And I, I like the, the title, Grown Man Issues.
Yes. Yeah, we have to.
That's some title. But, and so I'll, I'll, I'll miss it, but really, just, I had a conversation with Norm Easterbrook at the River Center on Saturday night, Mayor. I was there at the Miss Georgia Pageant, and he's excited about the play you're bringing. And, and I said, Norm, they're only going to get three minutes. Should I put them on my agenda as an update so that we can give them, on your behalf, all the time they want or need? And he said, he, he thought that, you know, you would be able to do it in, in the three to five minutes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a star-studded cast. We have Bryant White from Stump the Yard. We have Willie Taylor from Day 26. We have Claudia Jordan from, from Housewives, and the Grammy Award-winning performer Natasha Scott from the group Escape.
Well, and I'm glad you're sharing all of that, because we're televised live, and we rebroadcast three times a day, every day through the period of the play. So, so people will get to hear your presentation here and know what's going to take place with Grown Man Issues. And, and Mayor, I, I do want to say Natasha Rogers, I know her, but I've never met her in person. She has done some work for my beloved institution, Talladega College. And, and so I've been on Zoom calls with her, and this is the first time I've ever seen her in person. And so I want to welcome you to Columbus. In fact, when I saw that she was going to be here and on public agenda, I called her yesterday. And she says, yeah, I'm coming to your little city. And you know that rubbed me the wrong way. And so my response to her, because she's from Birmingham.
You're about to see some Grown Man Issues.
She's from Birmingham. I says, little city? I says, we're larger than Birmingham. She said, no, you're not. No, you're not. So I'm Googling while I'm talking to her. And I said, I, I pulled up the 2020 census for Birmingham. Birmingham is 200,000 with a comma, 733 citizens. And I let her know that we are 206,000 with a comma, 922 citizens. And she says, oh, I didn't know that. Well, you know it now. We're larger than Birmingham. She says, well, I came there to a football game, and I, you know, I imagine it was probably Tuskegee Morehouse some time ago. Well, we're not that Columbus. We're a different Columbus. And so I told her, we, we've got whitewater rafting on the river wall, you can zip line across the river, you know, we got a hotel on the river, we got Broadway, the street, you know, and, and they're going to be in the River Center this, this play. Have you been to the River Center? You in for a treat. So go back and tell Birmingham that. We are the second-largest city in Georgia. Don't ever call my city that little town. So I wanted to take this opportunity to scold her and get her straight. Ms. Stevens, thank you, sir. Welcome to Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you guys so much. You have a blessed day.
And Ms. Ms. Rogers, I will apologize for our city manager. He gets, he gets a little worked up about this. We are delighted to have you in Columbus, Georgia, and we are certain that as you make your way around town, you won't make that mistake again.
I won't. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We, we'll now move to the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just got a couple of items. First, I have, I have the 2023 5303 grant application for planning assistance for Metra. It's the annual agreement.
There's a motion and a second to approve item one. Any discussion? All right, please queue it. Councillors, register your votes, please.
And Mayor, this comes to you each year about this time. It's just a renewal of the Metra grant. It's $130,159 with a 10% match. And then number two is the 2023 5303 grant application, and that amount is $3.8 million.
Motion, second to approve. Enter discussion. Hearing none, please queue it. Councillors, register your votes. And that's approved.
And then we've got the appropriation, potential appropriation. It's the 2023 Congressional Appropriations Spending Request for Electric Buses for Metra. It's $5 million.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. So we would get the $5 million from, you know, from these funds. And how much would it cost us going forward to sustain this?
Well, first of all, this will allow us to put in the charging station, electric charging station, and get some electric buses. And so the charging station, the infrastructure would be there. And sometime in the, the future, of course, you may have to replace a charging station or certainly with the dollars that are available to us, we will be able to purchase additional buses. We got to remember that 2012 T-Splats allowed for $22.4 million for Metra, and they were able to buy buses and add operators and do all of that. I think they've still got about $11 million left in that. And then remember, the new T-Splats that was just approved is $25 million. And so, and then they get $5 million like this, and they've gotten some, obviously, ARP dollars. Our public transit system is pretty, is funded pretty good for, for foreseeable future. So we're very pleased with that. But that was number three.
There was, there was a motion and a second to approve. We can queue it. Now, council, you may register your votes. And you've explained it, I think. All right, that's approved.
And I've got a street acceptance portion of Hereford Lane.
Motion and second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. Councillors, register your votes. And Mr. Hughley, if you would, go explain what that was for.
Oh, the street acceptance?
Yep.
It's the acceptance, the usual acceptance of portion of a street, Hereford Lane, and it's, in the Heffron Farms area, and it's recommended by engineering. So that's what we just approved on that. And then I've got purchases. I've just got two items. Amendment one for copier rental services. It's $13,089 per month for copier rental services.
Motion, second to approve the purchases, A and B. Any discussion? Since they're lumped together, well, we can queue it, I guess. All right, they're approved. You want to wa, explain what the other juvenile justice incentive grant?
B is a management services for juvenile justice incentive grant. And it's, we're asking you to authorize the execution of an annual contract with evidence-based associates. It's a management service for Georgia juvenile justice incentive grant for our county is what that is. And then I've got just a couple of more updates. You've heard from the city boards. I've got tax allocation district update, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. And then she will be followed with a finance update, a monthly finance update by Finance Director Angelica Alexander, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Good morning, Mayor and council. This is just a quick update, just to remind everyone about tax allocation districts. Really what they are and the purpose of a tax allocation district is a tool, basic tool for redevelopment. It uses the increases in property taxes, what we call the tax increment, in a specific area to offset the costs of that redevelopment. Other states call it tax increment financing. In Georgia, it's the tax allocation district. And there are really three steps to the process for TADS, the state statutory defined redevelopment plan. The state statutory defined redevelopment plan must be, uh, developed and approved by a city council. Identify the, and approve the area, the boundary of the actual TAD. And that must be done by December thirty-first for it to take effect, uh, the following year. And then approving a project within that TAD is the third step. So this is the lengthy step of who's responsible for what in a, in a TAD process. Um, the TAD district is formed, and it's submitted by the applicant. Uh, they do the redevelopment plan that comes to council for approval. And that, um, allocation, or the tax allocation district boundaries are set. Uh, then the city goes through our review process, public hearings, and then it comes to council for approval. And then also, the school district gets involved. If they want to participate in the TAD, uh, then there is an intergovernmental agreement with the school district for their tax increment to also go into the TAD for these redevelopment, uh, purposes. Then it goes to DOR, uh, Department of Revenue, for that tax base to be set. Uh, and then the TAD, uh, boundaries and the TAD district is in place. So then, after the TAD is in place, the project applications for funding in that approved TAD district must demonstrate substantial public benefit. Um, it must either create new jobs, uh, substantially retain existing jobs, bolster employment, uh, provide diverse economic opportunities, redevelopment, redevelop underperforming or underutilized neighborhoods, increase sustainability development practices in commercial nodes, uh, decrease blight and poverty, reduce crime, increase property values and tax revenues to the city, and implement the city's comprehensive and transportation plans and economic development strategies. So when an application is submitted, it must meet one or more than one of these, um, types of criteria for that application to move forward, uh, to council. How the TAD works is when we talk about a tax increment, um, basically the future property tax, taxes from the new development and future growth is used to pay off any approved TAD projects, um, for that development. So when the base is set, um, that tax base is set, um, by Department of Revenue. And then once any tax revenue over and above where that tax base is set, that's called the tax increment, that goes into a special fund for that particular TAD. They are not commingled with any other funds. They each, each TAD district is kept separate in a separate special revenue fund. So in, um, Muskogee County, we have eight tax dis, tax allocation districts. Midland Commons, Midtown West, Midtown East, Benning Technology Park, Second Avenue City Village, Uptown, Sixth Avenue Liberty District, and the South Columbus River District. So we have eight, uh, tax allocation districts in our county. Each one of those TAD districts, um, has a balance. Um, in that particular TAD fund, uh, the Benning Technology Park, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. That was certified in two thousand and fifteen. The Sixth Avenue Liberty District has two hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. That was formed in two thousand and sixteen. The Uptown TAD, two point nine million. That, again, was formed in two thousand and sixteen. That has three projects that has been approved by council. So that one has been our most active tax allocation district. Second Avenue and City Village, four hundred and fourteen thousand. Uh, that was also formed in two thousand and sixteen. Midtown West, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That, again, was formed in two thousand and sixteen. Midtown East, twenty-three thousand. Uh, we have one application that was just submitted, so that one is under review. Uh, that one was formed in two thousand and sixteen. Midland Commons, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty. That has one application, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. It looks like the last one was cut off from the bottom. The South Columbus River District has two thousand dollars. That one was just formed in two thousand and twenty, and that has one approved project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. This was just to give you an update on tax allocation districts and kind of where we stand, um, with applications submitted for projects in each one of those districts.
Counselor Huff.
Good morning. Thank you so very much. Uh, if, would you, uh, could you send us the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's valuable information.
Yes, sir.
Keeps me from reading the big book. Thank you.
Any other questions for Deputy City Manager? Counselor Thomas.
I have a question that does not, uh, apply to the TADS, but, uh, and this may not be in your bailiwick, but I think it is. I have been asked by numerous citizens about the repaving on Second Avenue that, you know, they go for a couple of blocks and stop and so forth. Do you have any idea how that's going to all work out on Second Avenue?
So on Second Avenue, which is a G dot route, what they have done is come in and patched certain areas. And so some of it does look like a complete resurfacing. What they are doing is they're going to do a complete reconstruction of Second Avenue. So they're gonna mill down. They're gonna take out all the bricks and do a complete reconstruction, but not immediately. That's in their plan over the next three to five years. And that will be coupled with our T-Splus project that's in band two for the streetscapes along Second Avenue. So G dot came in and basically did a really good patch job for that portion of Second Avenue to kind of hold us over until they can do that complete reconstruction.
And if I understand correctly, Second Avenue, for the most part, down underneath all of that is brick.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay, and you're gonna take that out?
Yes, G dot is going to do that project. That's a G dot route, so they're gonna do a complete reconstruction of Second Avenue.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Procham? Okay. All right, any, any other questions? Thank you.
Uh, and Mayor, my final update, um, is the monthly finance update from Finance Director Angelica Alexander.
Hello again. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
So, um, the finance update today is, um, for May twenty twenty-two, FY twenty-two, comparing May of, um, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. And so just, um, starting with the, uh, the right side of the snapshot with the, um, operating fund revenues. Um, but on its face, right now, the general fund, um, is down one point five four percent when compared to FY twenty-one. Um, again, not overly concerned about that. You know, some revenue sources, obviously, we're still recovering from, particularly, uh, with our fines and forfeitures. Um, also, um, we have to take into consideration that one-time audit money from the Department of Revenue. Um, if we exclude that one-time, um, audit money, the revenue, uh, general fund revenue would be up about one percent. Um, same thing for the other local option. Sales tax fund on its face is down one point seven seven percent. Again, excluding that one-time audit revenue, it would be up approximately eight percent. Um, the stormwater fund is up one point zero two percent. Um, paving fund up point three seven percent. Uh, medical center fund is up one point three six percent. Um, the integrated, uh, waste fund is down fifteen point, uh, two four percent. Um, that's largely due to the, uh, residential fee waiver, um, that was approved this fiscal year, as well as the general fund, um, equipment investment. That was about two point seven million, um, in investment, um, a subsidy from the general fund to the integrated waste fund last fiscal year. Um, the E nine one one fund is up three point five four percent. Uh, the Economic Development Fund is up five point five zero percent. Uh, the debt service fund is down, uh, one point seven seven percent. This is due to the retirement of debt, uh, related to a couple of GMA leases. Um, the Metra Transportation Fund is up, um, thirty-two point nine nine percent. You know, Metra is one of those funds that we have that, um, has multiple funding sources. It's operational revenue that we receive from passenger, um, uh, revenues, as well as, uh, grants and, um, property tax revenue. So it's just the timing of the revenues that we receive. Uh, there were a lot of, um, um, expenditures related to the grants that we received reimbursement for this year. So, uh, the Trade Center Fund is up, um, uh, one hundred twelve point three one percent. Again, this is due to the convention service and space rental revenue. Um, they also receive, um, revenue recovery from the ARPA funds, as well as, uh, uh, hotel motel, uh, tax, uh, revenues are up. Those are actually up almost sixty-eight percent over this time last year. Uh, the Bull Creek Golf Course Fund on its face is showing that it's down eleven point two, uh, six percent. Uh, but that's actually related to, uh, again, another general fund subsidy for equipment. Uh, that was a purchase of some golf carts last fiscal year. Um, excluding that general fund, uh, subsidy, um, the fund would actually be up about two percent. Oxbow Creek Golf Course Fund is up nine percent. And the Civic Center Fund is, um, up four hundred thirty-three percent. Uh, this is, uh, largely due to, um, the, um, grants that we receive for the Civic Center. Uh, we received about one point three million in grants this year. Also, they, uh, receive hotel, uh, motel recovery funds, and again, that hotel motel, um, monthly revenue is up about sixty-eight percent. Moving down the snapshot to the other local option, um, sales tax fund, public safety summary, we've, uh, recorded to date about twenty-six point one million. Um, expenditures obligated to date about thirty-one point eight million. For the other local option, sales tax, uh, infrastructure side, we've recorded to date eleven point one million in revenues, and we have about ten point one million in obligations. Uh, moving over to the left side of the snapshot here for the general fund expenditures by department, the goal at this point, uh, in the fix, in the fiscal year is to be, uh, right at, uh, at or above eight percent in terms of, um, what's remaining in the budget. So what's on the watch list right now, obviously, the, um, still defending several million in claims for the city attorney's litigation budget. Um, the employee benefits budget is on the watch list, and that's primarily due to the annual death benefit and major disability payments that we make. That's primarily what that budget is comprised of. So, um, having concerns, um, about that right now. Um, also on the watch list, as we move down the snapshot, is the fire and EMS. Uh, we knew that fire and EMS would be one of those departments that would be trending to be over budget this year due to those retention bonuses that were approved back in December. Um, you know, salary savings was the major funding source in most public safety departments, except for fire and EMS and, uh, possibly MCP, but primarily fi, fire and EMS.
And they, in addition to the bonuses, they, they, they're gonna struggle right now with overtime and with maintenance for some of those older vehicles.
Mm-hmm, right. So, uh, the next caveat to that was, uh, we will likely have fire and EMS back before the council, uh, possibly next week, um, due to some overages, as the mayor mentioned, in some of the auto parts and supplies due to the equipment repairs that they have to outsource. So they'll likely come before and ask for additional operating appropriations at the next meeting. The, um, Homeland Security is on the watch list, possibly. Uh, if, this is due to utilities. I've had some preliminary discussions with, um, um, the person that's over the Homeland Security budget. I know. I just didn't know exactly how to, um, refer to him as. But I've had some preliminary discussions about some of the utilities. Do believe there is a budgetary increase in FY twenty-three for the utilities, but that is on the watch list, and that possibly will be over this year. Um, the jury manager is on the, uh, watch list for petty jury fees. Um, there is some ARPA funding, um, that we have to, that could, um, help with that. So I'm not overly concerned about the, uh, jury manager's budget right now. And the, uh, public defender, uh, budget is listed here, but again, we pay that contract in advance. And so, uh, no concerns regarding the public defender's office at this time. So that in a nutshell is the, uh, financial update for May of twenty twenty-two, and I'd be, uh, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
All right. Any questions for the Finance Director? No, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Move on to the clerk. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, item one, our minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion second, receive the minutes. Any edits or discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're, they're received.
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we will start with your appointments. Uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Commissioners, the seat of Donna Hicks. She is not eligible to serve another term.
And I've received a couple of recommendations from the director. Uh, I'll have one for you next, next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The Board of Water Commissioners, Mr. Clint Cox was nominated to serve.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Cox. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
For the Tree Board, Ms. Beauty Moore was nominated to serve another term.
All right. There's a motion to confirm. Is there a second? Motion second to confirm Ms. Moore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Also for the Tree Board, Mr. Jeremy Cummings was nominated to serve another term.
First and second, uh, to, to confirm Mr. Cummings. Uh, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
And for the Tree Board, Ms. Sharitha Cuts Thomas was nominated to fill the vacancy. That's to keep Columbus beautiful representative.
All right, there's a motion to confirm the new director and a second, uh, Ms. Cuts Thomas. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, she's confirmed.
For the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority, Mr. Mike Welch was nominated to fill the unexpired term of the late Mr. Gary Jones. He may be confirmed.
All right, there is a motion to confirm. Counselor Thomas?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would ask, um, Mr. Welch has asked that his name be removed from nomination until we can find out a little more about what's going on in the Valley Partnership. So he has asked, uh, to remove his name from nomination.
Okay. Well, the nominee's been withdrawn.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Tree Board, we have the seats of Chris Henson, Troy Keller, and Frank Tommy. All these seats are open for nominations, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, we do have a request to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues. Motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. All right, we are, uh, back in ex, uh, in regular session. We were in executive session to discuss personnel issues. No votes were taken. Uh, before we adjourn, I would like to remind you that today is after all election day. There are still some races yet to be decided, and there's still some opponents for, uh, races in November that are still to be decided. So I would urge you to go to your polling place, not here, but go to your polling precinct and, uh, and, uh, and vote today. All right, with that said, we'll entertain a motion. Motion to adjourn and second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.